So much. And now, the May 24th, 2021 regular Wasilla City Council meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you've got personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for a recess. Also, when speaking, please remember to state your name for those streaming the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor, with councilmembers Rousa, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey participating with us in person. Councilmember Bernie is telephonic.
Okay, please stand for the pledge. And Mr. Sterns, would you lead us today, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Rousa?
There are three items I'd like to remove from the consent agenda. The first is Resolution Serial Number 2109. The second is Resolution Serial Number 2110. The third is Resolution Serial Number 2113.
Okay. 2113.
82, 83. I'm sorry. 81, yeah, 83, 1, 2, and 4.
Okay. Is there any objection to the amended agenda?
I'd like to know why.
Mr. Rousa?
Madam Mayor, is this an appropriate time to discuss this? Or should we do that while we're discussing the resolutions?
Through the chair to Mr. Rousa. I think it's really up to the body. Generally speaking, historically, we've never talked about the whys under this portion of the agenda. If there's objection, then you would just vote no to amending the objection. If there's no objection, of course, you vote yes. And generally, discussion happens after the motion to move the item is on the floor. So once the motion to approve Resolution 2109 is on the floor, you discuss the merits of the resolution. But if the body wants discussion now, it's up to the body. Mr. Bernie, I think you're probably, there's objection from you. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Would the council take a vote, then, on the amendment of the agenda? Ready to vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernie?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda by moving Resolution Serial Numbers 2109, 2110, and 2113 from the consent agenda to new business passes with councilmembers Rousa, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Bernie opposed.
Okay. Do we, do we need to take a vote on the agenda?
No, we've just amended it.
Okay, all right. Then the agenda is approved as amended. We have no special orders of the day, and we are on to Commission and Agencies' report, Parks and Recreation Commission. Ms. Clapperidge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The Parks and Recreation meeting was held on May 12th. They went into a committee of the whole to discuss the upcoming Music in the Park, which is going to be every Friday in the month of June at Idita Park, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Wasilla Summer Fest is going to resume at the Menards Center with the 49 State Street Radars Car Show, July 2nd through the 4th, and there's going to be a concert on July 3rd. The 4th of July celebrations were also discussed with the parade, the picnic, and fireworks on the 4th. Cleanup Days was wildly successful with over 5,200 pounds of garbage that was in the dumpster that was supplied by the Matsu Borough. And also discussed in the committee of the whole was our Arbor Day. It was the first annual four-mile run that started at Newcombe Park, ran through Nunley Park, Idita Park, down Nicola Avenue, off of church, crossed the Parks Highway, and ended at the Menards Center with beautiful flowers from Jacobson's that had hanging baskets. And also, there was a little, another one-mile little run for the kiddos, and they each got a little pet potted flower as well. And that was a big success. And then there was discussion on the 25th anniversary of Wonderland Park, and the commission made a motion to have the Public Works and Parks Maintenance Department submit a list of refurbishments that are needed for the park and how we would go about doing that.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Clapperidge? Hearing none. Next up is Mr. Giddings.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the airshow, the committee continues to meet. Really have nothing new to add. We're just working out details as we get closer to the day of the show or the weekend of.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Giddings? Hearing none. Next on the agenda is a report from the Alaska Redistricting Board Executive Board Director Peter Torkelson. Is that right?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me today. I have a presentation, which is, I believe in your pack and invisible on the screen, so if it's okay, I'll just proceed with that, and then we'll have time for questions afterwards. Okay, great. You may recall that 1998, the voters passed a constitutional amendment which changed how Alaska draws new district lines. Previously, the governor essentially had all the power to draw new lines in Alaska. And in 1998, Alaska became one of the few states who has what's called a commission model, or in this case, we call it a board. It's five people who are independent, as independent as possible from the political process, to have the authority to draw lines for new legislative districts after each decennial census. As you know, the census was done in 2020, so that time is now upon us. Two members are appointed by the governor, two by the Senate President, one by the Senate President, one by the Speaker of the House, and one by the Supreme Court Chief Justice. The Constitution requires that members are from a geographically diverse, from all around the state. It's actually written with judicial districts, so we have a board that is, represents the vastness of Alaska. There's a couple caveats. Board members must be Alaska residents, of course. They cannot run for legislative office in the election following the drawing of new lines, so there can't be any connection in that regard. And then, the board will then be responsible for defending the adopted plan in the court system. The current board was appointed and convened in August 2020. Thanks to the COVID situation, all meetings have been virtual. I've never met the board, actually, in person. Our board members are John Binkley of Fairbanks, who was chosen as Chair, Melanie Bonkey of Nome, Nicole Barome of Anchorage, Bethany Markham from Wasilla, and Bud Simpson from Juneau. Why change what works? We have districts, people are generally happy with them. The last plan was a costly litigation, involved a lot of litigation, so why go back? Why change? And simply that the U.S. and Alaska Constitutions Equal Protection Clause require that we have one person, one vote, as close as possible. So if people are moving into the valley, that means that all of your votes for legislative office are losing strength because there's more people here. And if there's another district that's losing population, those voters are gaining strength as they have a greater and greater say in who represents them in Juneau. And over time, that leads to a loss of one person, one vote. So we have to make changes every 10 years. That's just the way it is. Alaskans do move a lot, as I'm sure you're aware. In the past, in-migration and outmigrations have spiked throughout Alaska, but they've generally balanced to where Alaska's population grows. However, as you're going to see in the next few slides, that's changed. We're not sure if it's a fundamental change, but it's certainly a midterm trend. There's also a lot of churn. Throughout Alaska, people move from Fairbanks to Anchorage back and forth, but that is very different throughout Alaska. For example, in the Bethel census area, 88% of Alaskans live, were born there, who live there. And in the Lusians, far out where the seafood processing plants are, it's 17%. So there's a huge swing, depending on what part of the state you're in, to whether people were born there. Here's Alaska's total population from just after the war until 2019. You'll see generally growth with some ups and downs until the last about eight years. When we zoom in and we subtract in-migration from out-migration, a picture jumps into focus where you see the Korean War clearly, the pipeline, then the pipeline bust, then the oil boom, oil bust, and then a spike during the U.S. recession in 2007, '08, '09, when our economy was doing good, theirs was bad, brought people to Alaska. And now you see this trend the last eight years or so, where there's been consecutive years of losses. And that's made this redistricting cycle fundamentally different than any previous cycle. As you can see, the past cycles have dealt with, in some cases, 10 new legislative districts worth of people. If there's 10,000 people to a district and you gained 133,000 people, that's 13 new legislative seats. You don't, you don't have new seats, we have 40 seats, but that means you have to redraw them dramatically. This cycle, we've gained only 23,000 people, which is just over one legislative seat's worth of population in 10 years. So this is a new cycle. We don't know how that's really, what that really means yet, but it's different. Everyone wants to know when we're going to start drawing lines. Normally, we would be drawing now. You may have seen news stories about it. And thankfully, unlike California and some other states, the Alaska's Constitution triggers the timeline based on official receipt of census data. So we were already built-in COVID proof when this language was written. California had a fixed deadline. You will draw districts by, say, June 15th. Well, that's not working. So once we do get official data, we have 30 days to adopt one or more proposed plans. Last time, the board adopted five proposed plans. And then, in 60 days that follows, go out on what we call the roadshow and take these proposed plans out to get the feedback from Alaskans about how they feel about this plan versus this plan, or this plan or that plan. So we will certainly be back in the valley again, probably in October, with some proposed plans, actual maps that you can look at and say, well, we like this, or don't like this, or this is a good line or not a good line. A normal redistricting cycle, and this is very close to what the timeline was 10 years ago. We would have got the date of March 15th. We'd be talking to you right now about proposed plans, and a final plan would have been adopted in June. Then the Constitution allows a 30-day litigation window. So once a final plan is adopted, any lawsuits must be brought within 30 days. This allows there to be closure. If there's no lawsuits after that, it's done, it's finished. So there's a 30-day window. That normally gives about a full year for the court system to work through litigation and come up with some resolutions. When are we going to get the data? Nobody seems to know. The census has actually given us some signals, and if you want to read the emails, you can go on our website and read the actual emails they send me. I mean, like, what do they mean? It's not clear. They definitely said September 30th. Then they got sued about that by Ohio, and then they came out with this email saying, "Well, we've recently discovered that we might be able to get the data sooner." They seem to be settling in mid to late August. We expect to have data. We just don't know for sure. What that means is hypothetically, if August 24th were our official date, our deadline for new districts would be November 22nd, just before Thanksgiving, and the deadline for litigation would be December 22nd. That would leave about a five-month litigation window. If we get it September 30th, our deadline is right between Christmas and New Year's, which sounds like a lovely time to be drawing new districts, and we would have a four-month litigation window. This is not ideal. We know that. We don't have the freedom to change it. We don't know what the court system's going to do with such a tight litigation window. They're supposed to give us expedited hearings, but, you know, they move at their own pace. So we don't really know what that means. What it means is if you want to run for office, you might not know for sure which district you'll end up in. And the board's keenly aware of this, but we're just not, we don't have the power to change it. We can't change the census. They don't care what we think, and the Constitution is absolutely fixed on the deadlines. So that's where we are. Here's kind of the flow of zooming in. Day zero, we get the data, and then we go through a process where we have to load it in the software and then start to analyze the population differences. We will then work up some draft plans. Last cycle, we had several outside groups submit their own plans. They said, "We think this is a great plan." Okay, Group A, Group B, Group C. And those, while they were, you could say there were, you know, maybe interest groups, it was a very useful exercise because some of these maps had lines in common across all three of them. Well, okay, everybody agrees about this line, so they did help to highlight areas of consensus, and we do expect to receive third-party plans again this cycle. After the proposed plans are adopted, we go on a roadshow phase. Last time, the board broke into three groups of two, myself and one member, and then two members, just to allow us to go to more places, essentially, with all of the maps in tow. This is just one hypothetical grouping. You know, one group does Anchorage, you group, or we don't know how that's really going to shake out, but we do have 60 days to go on the roadshow and get feedback, and then we have to adopt a final plan. Census got back to us with the total population for Alaska and all other states about two and a half weeks ago. Alaska's official population is 733,391. If you divide that by 40, that's up about 23,000. If you divide that by 40, that means our ideal district target size is 18,355. That's up about 700-ish people from last time. We have a website that's launched. There's, you can get, I post pretty much everything we learned there. There's a great opportunity to get involved. It's a simple form. Just give me your name and an email address, and I will email you the moment we get any new news, like, oh, we actually do know when the census is coming, or the board's going to, you know, look at some policies or whatever. So I do email these folks fairly recently, and you're certainly welcome to join the list. Of course, redistricting is about maps. You can view the current maps there in detail, download high-res PDFs, print them out, and then, once proposed plans are adopted, the website will have all manner of maps, every version that you can imagine. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer questions, and we'll be happy to hear from any of you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Torkelson?
Councilman Brown, you was talking about population. I've noticed that since the COVID virus, a lot of people have moved from Anchorage out to the valley, but that was after the census was taken. Do you even consider that, or you only go by the numbers that you're given by the census board?
Thank you, Councilman. Through the mayor. We are bound to the official census reporting, both in the Constitution and state statutes, which prohibit the board from spending a single dime of money to do any statistical analysis, to make any changes to census numbers. So we have to take what the census gives us, and the date is April 1st. Where you slept on April 1st is what the census wants you to, that's where you were counted, and that's where the board will believe that you live, even if you've moved subsequently.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'll leave a few cards in the back.
Okay. There are three ordinances scheduled for public hearing this evening. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the first ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's Ordinance Serial Number 2110, Amending Wasilla Municipal Code Section 404-090. Propositions and questions relating to when an ordinance placing propositions or questions before the voters must be adopted before a regular election. Amending subsection 420-020E with an absentee by mail voting to clarify the process for delivering absentee by mail ballot return envelopes. Amending subsection 428-020C within write-in votes to establish when write-in votes are tallied. Amending subsection 428-080A within counting absentee by mail ballots relating to the counting of absentee by mail ballots returned to an election official or via the Dropbox. And amending section 434-040 procedure for recount to establish that write-in votes are not invalidated by writing in the name of a candidate whose name is printed on the ballot in a recount.
Jim has left.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number 2110 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the staff. My name is Stu Graham, proud resident of the city of Wasilla. And, you know, I think this is great that we're, you know, finding ways to make sure that the election code matches up with what we need to be doing. But I think, just from a transparency standpoint, I'd kind of like to hear what brought this about. I mean, were there issues during the last election or previous elections, or is this just something that, you know, perhaps the clerk has been working on for years and has kind of brought this forward? And I'd just kind of like to hear where this came from. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Do you want me to speak after?
Oh, I guess so. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed. And we need a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 2110.
Madam Mayor? Councilman Rousa, I move to approve ordinance serial number 2110. Councilman Brown, second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rousa and seconded by Councilmember Brown to adopt ordinance serial number 2110. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, line 52, it's minor, N and A, absentee, it should be just A. Anyway, minor, minor correction.
Through the chair. It used to just read, it will read A. We had to put the capital there. We're just crossing out the lowercase. Thank you.
Councilman Rousa, through the mayor. I would like to hear some clarification on where this came from in response to Mr. Graham's comment. I, too, was a little confused by the item two in this, in this ordinance, where, about the Dropbox location, and what is the issue that we're fixing, I guess? And what does it change functionally? And where did this come from?
Madam Clerk?
Through the chair to the council. Would you like me to go through each section of the ordinance?
Number two is the one that I'm specifically interested in.
Is that in section three?
I'm sorry. It's on the summary statement.
Bear with me.
Yeah, I'm just reading the summary statement.
Oh, okay. So currently, in code, the way it's always read is that you can deliver an absentee by mail ballot in a manner designated by the clerk. It was that simple, by 8:00 PM on Election Day. And so, as, pardon me, as Dropboxes became, as we established a Dropbox, it was just important to me to have it in code that, I mean, it was implied because I designated that location as a Dropbox, but I just wanted code to explicitly call out the Dropbox. So I considered that a technical amendment.
A quick, quick follow-up question, Councilman Rousa. The Dropbox, how do you, how can you be sure that the ballots are placed in the Dropbox prior to 8:00 PM, I guess? Or is that the intent? And how can you be sure of that, if they're actually received from the Dropbox the day after, potentially?
Very good question. Through the chair to Councilmember Rousa. So what I do is, City Hall actually has two Dropboxes, although we have only one official ballot Dropbox, recognizing that a voter might not read the fine print. And there's Dropboxes out in front on Herning, and you'll see a huge sign, and then there's one back by the finance store. So I have two election officials, and what they do is they have keys to the Dropbox, and at 8:00, we sync our, if everybody's on the same page, we sync timers, and at 8:00, they flip a switch to where if anything was dropped in after 8, 8:01, or two seconds after 8, you can't insert a ballot in there. They gather the ones that were legally dropped by 8. They fill out an actual affidavit where they swear, you know, these are the ballots in hand. Those go into a certain envelope and are sealed. Those are presented to the canvas board. They were received on time. And then the ones that weren't, there's an affidavit with those that says those were received after the fact. This last election, we got one the next day. Those are presented to the canvas board, and following code, they're not able to count those because they weren't received in accordance with procedures in code.
Thank you. That was my only concern with this, and seems, seems like an adequate response. Appreciate it.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance serial number 2110.
Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
The motion to approve ordinance serial number 2110 passes unanimously with councilmembers Rousa, Bernie, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
The next public hearing is on ordinance serial number 2111. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you. That's amending the fiscal year 2021 budget by accepting and appropriating a $50,000 grant from the Mount Sioux Trails and Parks Foundation for improvements to the Maureen McCombs Trail.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number 2111 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name, and your comments are limited to three minutes per person. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 2111?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance serial number 2111.
Is there a second?
Thank you, ma'am.
It's been moved by Councilmember Vlach and seconded by Councilmember Bernie to adopt ordinance serial number 2111. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, I'm reading through this, I'm not getting a good picture of exactly where this trail is. I'm just curious.
Mr. Giddings.
So this trail is, it's kind of, its trailhead is on the south side of Mistory Avenue where the soccer fields are. So there's, it begins there, so the primary loop we're working on is going to facilitate cross-country track meets, so that loops around, around the soccer fields.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance serial number 2111.
Councilmember Bernie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance serial number 2111 passes unanimously with councilmembers Rousa, Bernie, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
The next public hearing is on ordinance serial number 2112. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance.
Amending the fiscal year 2021 budget by appropriating $72,200 from the general fund fund balance for City Hall remodel professional services.
The public hearing on serial number, ordinance serial number 2112 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. You have three minutes for your comments. Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 2112?
Madam Mayor? Councilman Rousa, I move to approve ordinance serial number 2112. Councilman, are you second? Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rousa and seconded by Councilmember Harvey to adopt ordinance serial number 2112. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Rousa?
Thank you. Just reading through the ordinance a couple days ago, I couldn't help but notice that the scope of work really only included partitions and didn't, didn't really include, didn't seem to me like it included much complexity aside from the asbestos abatement. And I guess my, from a 30,000-foot level, it just seemed a bit steep. And I wanted to hear what the Public Works Director had to say about the selection process. What I can read in here is that they basically, you know, interviewed the best, so to speak. They're the best choice from the choices that were available. And I'm just wondering if I could hear a narrative from the Public Works Director about what that means.
Mr. Giddings.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So our RFP process puts out a scope and puts out criteria, scoring criteria, and it's evaluated on the written response. So it's who wrote the best proposal and had the best evidence supporting their, their strengths. And so I, it is funny, reading these over the years, some firms- these over the years, some firms will respond, this is great, and the next time, it's not so great. But it's the same firm, it's the same company. So we have to go, to make it equal, we have to score on what is the written response at the time in our hands. And so there's, in this case, we had three members score these based on the criteria, and Architects Alaska came out with the highest ranked proposal.
Thank you. And my specific follow-up question, is the asbestos abatement physically part of this scope of work? Or is it more investigative? Will they actually be abating asbestos under this scope of work, under this contract? Or is that in addition, based on what they find during the investigative process?
So I'll fall back on your initial comment and uncover that. But, so the price, I thought, was really good because this is design, this is bidding services, and this is construction admin, all for $72,000. So I was quite happy with the pricing we got. The actual architect fee in here is fairly small. You've got a lot of subs doing a lot of things, mechanical, electrical. And on the asbestos side, that is to do the testing and analysis of areas that the contractor's going to have to abate. So that part's pretty in-depth, but it's not, there'll be a spec for it, and areas will be identified. So when the contractor tears into a wall or something, doesn't know what they're getting into.
Okay, thank you. So it's for construction administration and investigative work, but not for the actual abatement? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is on the adoption of ordinance serial number 2112. Councilmember Johnson?
Approved.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance serial number 2112 passes unanimously with Councilmembers Rousa, Bernie, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
Okay, we are on to persons to be heard. And Mr. Sterns, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tom Sterns. I am the Senior Ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. The big news, you might want to take this down, we have a new main phone number. We have a new phone system at Washee. The main number is 206-8800. That's our new number. 206-8800. And then Washee is open, everything is going as it used to go. We've got a building project, the Willow House, that's going well. And tomorrow's the big day. If you are looking for a place to stay, the Housing will open applications on the 25th of May, and that's tomorrow. Our senior gardens project, that's going well. We're getting the boxes in, and everything should be set up around the 1st of the month, next month. And here's the big stuff, the Miles for Meals. This is our big event for the year, our fundraiser. We're doing a virtual event this year, a virtual 5K run, walk, roll, and that begins on the 1st of June, and it goes through the 26th of June. On the 26th of June, at 10:00 in the morning, we're having a live event where you can do all that. You can do your walking and stuff, or running, or whatever it is you're going to do. But it's not going to be like years in the past where there's a picnic and prizes and all that. It's just going to be the run, the event itself, and that's it. And then, we put in a new little thing. We're doing a virtual silent auction. If you go to our website, our Washee website, that's open from the 15th of May to the 1st of June. So, and there's a ton of stuff out there. So go bid, bid high, and you will find something for yourself, and you'll help Washee in the same way. On Friday, the 28th, is our memorial tree service. Each year, we plant a tree for the people that have died in the previous year. This one will be for two years. There'll be a plaque on the tree with all the people's different names. And as you all know, Chuck Foster is leaving. He's retiring. A resolution on, to approve the CEO position profile was adopted on 2021 May. The Four Acre Group expects to release the call for applications early next week, probably on 1 June. Any questions?
You guys did the virtual Mile for Meal last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you feel that it's more successful than the in-person, or not as successful?
We gained a lot of money from it. And the thing that is neat about it is that this can be not just people local, this can be people all over the world that want to get involved in this thing. So we did have people that got involved in this from outside of the state of Alaska, and outside of this area. So I think that's good, you know.
Absolutely. I was just curious if you guys are planning to stick with the virtual or going back when things mellow out a little bit?
I think we would like to go back to the live, but we weren't really sure how the COVID-19 thing was going to pan out. And so we stuck with what we had. And then we added the auction, the silent auction.
I like it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Councilman Rousa, could you tell us a few things that are included in the silent auction?
There are trips to places in the state of Alaska, railroad-type things, dining, dining, different places dining. And then there's food items, there's all kinds of things. And there's probably, what, 150, would you say, items out there, at least that many? And so it'll take you a few minutes to scroll down and everything. But yeah, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sterns. And we will close persons to be heard. Oh, I forgot, you didn't sign in.
I did not.
No.
However...
You're opening persons to be heard for Stu Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Typically, there's a call for other persons who wish to speak. And today, I decided to take advantage of that. My apologies for the confusion.
Thank you.
Once again, my name is Stu Graham, proud resident of the city of Wasilla. And I wanted to say two things today. You know, obviously, as we know, the Parks Highway reconstruction through Washee is going to start next month. There hasn't been a whole lot of information out on that, but I am a member of the Wasilla Noon Rotary Club, which meets at noon upstairs in the Extreme Fund Center on Wednesdays. And this Wednesday, we will have the project manager from DOT and the project manager from Quality Asphalt Paving, who will be managing the project, actually doing the work. They'll talk about traffic management and answer any questions and things like that. You are all welcome to be my guests at that event. There is lunches served off a menu. It will be Dutch treat if you are my guest. But if you'd like to find out more about that project, I welcome you to come by and to bring anybody that you want. And certainly, you and your friends are welcome to be my guests there as well. And I also wanted to say that, you know, I don't make every meeting. I try to make every meeting, but I don't make every meeting. But when I'm unable to make the meetings, I do take advantage of YouTube or whatever it's called that's doing that. But I just wanted some feedback. You know, we're still cutting in and out on that. So I don't know if you have a broadband issue here. And the reason I can mention that is because I no longer work for MTA. But my thought is that you just don't have enough, you know, bandwidth there to handle the conversation that's going on. But it would be really handy if that worked every time. It's way better than it used to be. I can guarantee you that. But it'd be way better if it worked every time. I appreciate the clerk's interest and concern and all her work, working towards that. But I just wanted to let you know. And then, of course, thank you for choosing to serve. I appreciate it. And hopefully, we'll see some of you Wednesday. Bring your questions, and we'll get a match. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
I'm going to leave now.
Are you leaving? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Wednesday at 9:00.
Okay. I'm closing persons to be heard unless somebody else wants to testify. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two sets of meeting minutes for approval under our consent agenda, the special meeting minutes of April 28th and the regular meeting minutes of May 10th, 2021. We have one introduction with a public hearing date of June 14th, 2021. That's ordinance serial number 2113, amending sections of Wasilla Municipal Code within Title 5.16 Sales Tax to create certain uniform provisions for the collection and remittance of sales tax in alignment with the Alaska Uniform Remote Seller Sales Tax Code pursuant to Wasilla Municipal Code 5.16-225, Alaska Uniform Remote Seller Sales Tax Code adopted by reference. We have one resolution left remaining on the consent agenda. That's Resolution Serial Number 2112, authorizing and directing the drafting of a Code of Ethics applicable to elected and appointed officials of the city of Wasilla for consideration by the city council. We have two action memorandums up for approval. The first is AM Number 2122, awarding a three-year contract to ARS Elliott Analytical in the amount of $78,795,000 for water and wastewater laboratory testing services. And lastly, AM Number 2125, a contract award to Architects Alaska in the amount of $72,200 for City Hall Remodel Professional Services. And you just approved the funding for that under public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved by Councilman Johnson.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Harvey. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. There is no unfinished business this evening. And Madam Clerk, please read the next item of business.
So on the agenda, we have 10.1, which is update from administration on emergency response efforts related to COVID-19.
There has been no new action taken on response to COVID-19. Would you read the?
Second item?
Yes, the second item.
That's Resolution Serial Number 2109, supporting the waiver or modification of all petition requirements enforced or required by the Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office to protect Wasilla residents and its businesses owner and its business owners, pardon me, from unnecessary exposure to COVID-19, and to provide support to Wasilla business owners seeking alcohol licenses and permits amidst the pandemic.
Okay. Is there a, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, that's pages 105 through 106 of the packet.
Oh, sorry.
Just so everybody knows.
Councilman Rousa, I move to approve Resolution Serial Number 2109.
Councilman Brown, second.
It's been, the motion has been made by Councilmember Rousa and seconded by Councilmember Brown to approve Resolution Serial Number 2109. Is there discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman Rousa, I'm personally opposed to this resolution. I think that this is an important thing that has been done historically in the community to get out on foot and encounter the community in which you're fixing to influence. And I think that it should remain in place for now. Certainly, the pandemic, if we'd like to use that as the reason, is not permanent. It's going to go away. And this, as a resolution, is permanent, from what I can tell. And I don't think it's necessary. I think if anything, it's too little, too late. It might have made sense to have done this last year this time. But right now, I think that the primary objective here is not being fulfilled. And in the process, we're losing an important action that happens within our community. That's all I have.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Harvey?
On that, I'm now a little confused, because from my understanding, reading it, it says that this only is while the city's declaration of emergency remains in effect. Is that correct? So it's not a permit nature. Thank you.
It is not permanent. And really, you know, this is not an authority that falls within the city's purview. It's the Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office that has the petition requirement. And so they'll ultimately decide. But the mayor was approached by business owners who were finding this to be burdensome right now, to the idea of going door-to-door during the pandemic was daunting. And so this resolution really just provides that support. It would be accompanied by a letter from the mayor saying, here's a copy of the resolution. You know, we support waiving this while the emergency declaration remains in effect in the city of Washee. And that would give the AMCO the opportunity to make a decision. But ultimately, it will be their decision, if that's helpful.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, what exactly is the status of the declaration of emergency within the city of Washee at the current time?
Troy, you want to weigh in on that?
Madam Mayor, to the council, correct me if I'm wrong, Holly, but as far as I know, the declaration of emergency has not been lifted inside the city of Washee at the time.
This will be useful information, but it's just something to know. A lot of municipalities are grappling with what to do with their emergency declarations. Almost all are stepping back, of course, if they have restrictions in place, which Washee did not go that route. But other communities have started stepping back those restrictions. I do not know of a municipality that has allowed their emergency order to expire or failed to renew it if it has come due. And I think that's in large part due to standing up an emergency operations team. Again, if there's a wave, that takes time, that takes resources. And then also the funding mechanisms. As long as we have a federal emergency, there are funding opportunities that come to these municipalities. And to potentially lose those two harms together, I think, have influenced, I can't know for sure, but that might help council, as it is very likely that you'll be grappling with this issue as well in upcoming meetings.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Rousa.
Yeah, Councilman Rousa, thank you. So the use of the word permanent is clearly very inaccurate, and I use that word. So very inaccurate, as this is related to the emergency declaration. I know that the emergency declaration, just from previous meetings, has a lot to do with the city's availability to COVID relief funding and the CARES Act grants and things like that. And you know, as soon as we don't have that emergency declaration, there's something to do with the funding, and you don't have access to the money anymore. And that might be important to keep in place. It doesn't mean, though, that our community, you know, if you go out and about, people are, it's a beehive. People are everywhere. And I think that, you know, somebody mentioned there was some resistance from business owners to get out on foot and do this task because of the pandemic. I can tell you, just from knowing some business owners that have been tasked with doing this task, they didn't like it before COVID. They have to get out on foot and...
like it before COVID. They have to get out on foot and get signatures. And so, you know, it wasn't fun then either. And I just think that this might be...what you're saying is they're kind of using...reaching too far to suggest that they're using COVID-19 as a scapegoat. But I will say that I don't think that it's necessary. I think that it reaches beyond what's necessary to do this. I think that they should get out, and they should do that job. It's an important job for our community. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on the adoption of Resolution Serial Number 2109. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa?
No.
Councilmember Bernie?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Madam Mayor, the motion fails in a tie vote, with Councilmembers Brown, Vlach, and Harvey voting in favor, Councilmember Rousa, and Bernie and Johnson oppose. Do you wish to invoke your voting privilege in the affirmative for the motion to pass?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Haven't had that for a while. So under code, in a tie vote, the mayor is...that's the only time the mayor can vote. And so she votes yes. And so the motion to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2109 passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. And if you would read the third resolution.
That's Resolution Serial Number 2110, adopting the fiscal year 2022 salary structure and pay ranges for nonrepresented International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 302, Alaska District Council of Laborers, Laborers Local 341, and Wasilla Police Department Employees Association, employees of the City of Wasilla.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown, I move that we adopt Resolution Serial Number 2110.
Is there a second?
Second, then.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember Vlach to approve the Resolution 21-10. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Rousa, my concern with this resolution was probably not surprisingly with the pay of the Wasilla police officers, the patrol officers in particular. And, you know, I've asked questions about this before. I was met with a response that was consistent with, you know, our pay at Wasilla PD is competitive. That was one of the words that was used. And then the actual documentation that I received was nothing further than what's publicly available online. And so there really wasn't...really wasn't met with any real data, real information. What I do have, just in the 30 minutes that I spent to try to investigate pay as it compares to APD in particular, is that our patrol officers' pay is...and this is at the very beginning of the chart, left-hand side of the chart, if you're looking at the packet. I don't want to make this a long, drawn-out discussion here. That's not my point. But grade A, if you look at Officer One, Officer Two, and Sergeant, those three right there, those three items are directly comparable to APD. And Officer One is, in that bracket, comparing it directly with APD's is $13,000 a year less than APD. Officer Two is $10,000 a year less. And the Sergeant's pay is $8,000 a year less. And you could see that the biggest hit is right on the front. And I know that even right now, as we're in this meeting, we have an application out for a patrol officer, or not an application, but a...what do you call it? A job listing. I still am not convinced that our pay for patrol officers is competitive. And I'm not sure how we're matching it with our other perks either. I know that our pay step increases are consistent with our neighboring agency in Anchorage, at 2.5%. I know that APD...and I can't...I don't know any data from Wasilla PD on these subjects, but because it's not available, or it hasn't been made available to me as a city council member, so I have to believe that it's not available to anybody. I've asked, and I'm a city council member, and I've been shown nothing. So other perks at Wasilla PD or at APD, and this is available online, 4% pay increase for an associate's degree. They give you an 8% pay increase for a bachelor's degree. They pay 100% of your tuition in books, up to $3,600 annually. And that's at, you know, UAA or APU. The MOA contributes over $2,000 monthly for health insurance, and they add $350 a month if an employee chooses to opt out. They match 401K contributions 100%, up to 2% of the wage. And I'm not sure if our Wasilla PD officers participate in PERS or not, because, again, I wasn't...I asked, and nobody gave me any information. And so I would know this if somebody responded appropriately. But I don't know if the union that our officers have, are they plugged into the PERS retirement? Okay. And I'm seeing some nods, so that's good. That's good stuff. I like that. I just want to make sure that our department is in step with neighboring communities, and that we're attracting talent, and we're retaining talent, and that the pay helps do that. I know Councilman Brown, you know, very kindly pointed out that this is just something that politicians do to make themselves feel better. And it was a very out-of-place comment. And I can assure you, I'm not a politician, and I have no agenda in this, except for public safety in our community, and to try to minimize the instances that we saw, like at Walmart. You know, and I'm not saying it's a direct result of pay. But what I am saying is that we have the ability, through pay, through training, through the whole culture of the police department, to attract and retain real, solid talent. And I'm not saying that we don't have it either, but this is a piece of the puzzle. I can see you want me to be quiet. Good thing I'm done. Thank you.
Hey, Chief, do you have anything to say about this? Is he...Madam Mayor, is he there?
He is here. Chief, would you like to weigh in on this, please?
Well, what I'll say is, the pay structure, what have you not, is set forth through the negotiation process.
Wait a minute. Is your mic...
Can you hear me?
Okay.
The...Mr. Tankersley can pipe in also. But I believe the pay structure is designed through the negotiation process. That's something that the employees' union or the employee association sits down with the city and works out. I would say that there is probably nobody that would argue with getting paid more money. That certainly would...I don't think I would have any of my officers that would argue with getting more money. However, I would also say that, you know, the...I think there was alluded to that the police department doesn't have quality officers because of low pay, and that certain things would not have happened if we had quality officers. I cannot say that that is the furthest, absolute furthest, from reality. Our police department has top-notch officers. They know how much money they make. They knew how much money they make when they came to work here. And to say anything else, I take offense to.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, Chief. I'm pretty sure we have the best officers out there.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie. Councilman Brown?
Madam Mayor, I just...have you compared to Wasilla's pay and their benefits to similar-sized departments as Wasilla? Because I think if you compare it to other cities of similar size with similar workload, you find it a lot closer, and even higher in most cases. I think Anchorage is anomalous, and probably is not the perfect comparison to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy, would you want to weigh in on this a little bit, please?
Sure, Madam Mayor, through Madam Mayor to council. So the chief actually alluded to a little bit. This is a process whereby, through the council, negotiations are opened up with the union. These contracts, the collective bargaining agreement runs for about three years typically. And we have, in this particular case, this union open for negotiations probably this winter. During this process is the time when the whole collective bargaining agreement is open: wages, benefits, you name it. Everything's pretty much on the table and negotiated. The last contract negotiation, the bargaining members, we had quite an adjustment to the pay scale at that time. And in the course of that effort, I would say that one can't just simply look at MOA. You have to look at all departments across the state, because all departments are different: size, location, the different nuances that one department has versus another. So to compare just simply MOA absolutely is not apples to apples. And I have to agree with the chief that through that process, the city listens to all the members, what we can offer, what we can't offer, what's available, what's not available, et cetera, to try to meet in the middle. That's the process of the negotiations. And then we bring that contract, tentative contract, I might add, back to council, so council can understand the contract and decide if they want to go forward or not go forward. And then, like I mentioned, this contract is up again at the end of the fiscal year, which means we'll probably start negotiations this coming fall/winter time, and continue until a new contract is negotiated.
Thank you, Councilman Rousa. I just have a few follow-up comments. It won't take long, I promise. So, first of all, I'm not here to pander to anybody's sensitivities. Taking offense, I certainly apologize. I don't mean to offend anybody. That's not my intent. I can't really compare...I can't make an accurate comparison to Councilman Brown's comments, because I don't have any information. I'm not in a position to make good comparisons. I've got the information that's available to the general public, the general population. What I do know is that, just apples to apples, if this is really attractive and this isn't as attractive, there's gravity takes over and things move. Now, I don't know too many of the individuals on the Wasilla Police Department. The ones that I do know, I can agree with Chief Smith. Excellent people. Excellent people. So I'm not meaning to degrade the individual officers. I'm trying to look at this from a 30,000-foot level. By and large, if we do have the finest police officers, then we should step up our game and respond appropriately with good, solid pay. So I'm not even suggesting that we have bad officers. I'm just saying, if we do, why aren't we paying them? Why aren't we paying them competitively to make sure that they stay here, to make sure that we can keep them around for a long time? That's sort of my point. And, you know, I do building design for a living. People oftentimes want to save money on the project. And my suggestion is always to save money in the paint and flooring and, you know, cabinets and siding, things that they can replace later. Don't save money on the foundation. And for sure, the officers are the foundation of the police department, and we should not be saving money there. We shouldn't be saving money there. We should be paying them appropriately to the money that we've invested in the department, in the building. If the building looks like that, man, the officers, they should be squared away. They should be paid really well. That's really where I'm coming from. I'm not trying to say that we've got bad officers, because I don't even have that knowledge. I couldn't give you an accurate opinion of that.
Troy?
Madam Mayor to council, and Chief might be able to respond with me here. But to my knowledge, I don't remember one police officer as to what's being depicted here, that one police officer left the City of Wasilla's police force to go to MOA, simply because of money and/or benefits.
Chief, can you tell me how many officers that we have left...that we have lost to go to MOA or even another department in state since you've been acting chief or you've been with the department how many years?
Yes, Mayor. So I started working here January of 2000. I can think of one officer that left us to go to another agency. They came to us from another agency. They were with us for less than a year, and then moved on to another agency within state. Other than that, we've lost officers to retirement. We've lost officers to medical retirement. And we've lost officers moving out of state because of life changes. And I think, to my knowledge, one, maybe two of those have gone back into law enforcement in the lower 48.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Vlach.
This might be a question for Troy. Now, you're mentioning negotiations come up in the winter. And I'm not sure. It might be a question for Holly. Does the council have...can they input on those negotiations if they so desire?
Through Madam Mayor to Councilman Vlach. So on the front end of the negotiating process, we bring forth a resolution, I believe, that asks council to open the door to negotiations. And it's at that time, we provide the current contract. And it's at that time, it's for council to bring whatever concerns they might have. At the end of that, it instructs administration to go forward and negotiate. Now, how negotiations come out may or may not include those things council wants.
Okay.
And/or administrations wishes, right? At the end of those negotiations is what's called a tentative agreement. The negotiation process is over. Both sides have reached an agreement of some sorts. Typically, the bargaining members have voted on that tentative agreement. And if their members have passed it, let's say, then it comes back to council. And then the last step is for council to approve it. If council does not approve that resolution, they're in essence saying they're not adopting the contract, which means that administration now needs to go back to the union and renegotiate those issues the council may or may not have. And that process can continue until a new contract is done.
So the council, in the beginning, when you bring it to us, now we can...because we have access to it now, I would say. And if there's parts we don't like, or, you know, I know there's step increases that automatically happen, and cost of living that automatically happens, and that we could put our input in, saying, we don't like this. And if you would take that forward in the negotiation, or you would not?
Right. So what I'm referring to is at the end of...we've got it, like right now, I'm referencing a contract that's set to expire in June. Typically, because we know that contract's going to expire in June, we're going to backdate that up, because negotiations take a long time.
Right.
So we're going to start those negotiating processes, hopefully, so that we can get a new contract prior to the new fiscal year, right? So we know how to budget, and blah, blah, blah. In between, if, like, right now, if council says, we're not happy with... In between, if, like, right now, if Council says, "We're not happy with this particular portion of the contract," no matter what it is, we would actually have to contact the Union, and the Union would have to agree to actually open up the existing contract to renegotiate that particular point of that contract, and then for us to, and if they were to agree, then we'd have to bring it back to Council if Council wanted to accept that or not. That process takes a lot of time because we already have a contract.
Right.
Either side can open up a contract for whatever reason, but it's a renegotiation of that contract at that time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. So, we could give some input for the future. I know that someone, I think it was Mr. Graham, when he was on the Council, brought up the automatic cost of living increase or something. He didn't want to approve the budget because of that. So my thought was, well, maybe if he had brought that forward months ago, maybe it's something that could have been looked at at the time.
Right. That's really the purpose of that first resolution that we bring forward to Council, to gain any thoughts or concerns or what have you from Council's point of view, for us to then go into negotiations and attempt to either take away or add to, whatever the case might be, the contract. There's no guarantee, obviously, that the Union's going to agree. That's part of the negotiating process. And, you know, the process is a give and take.
Oh, yeah.
And how you come out at the end, you know, you never know.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
And don't forget, all of these negotiations, everything that's brought to the Council is open to public hearing. So the public is aware of what's going on. Jamie?
Yeah, through the Chair to the Council, I thought, I think that that's actually really something needed, and Wasilla should be really proud of it. In most cases, we don't take, we don't go through the formal public hearing process on a resolution. We actually do on the opening end and the ending end of the contract negotiations. So not only do we have an opportunity, obviously, for the Council to weigh in, it's a formal public hearing for the public to weigh in. Correct?
Yeah, and just, you know, I stated it, but I don't think I can state it strong enough, that through that negotiating process, and when that resolution comes back to Council for adoption of that new agreement, we don't bring a resolution to Council to adopt that without the Union members agreeing to it. So it's not like there's a big surprise there to the Union members before it even comes to the Board, all right? So that's a very important point, that the members are agreeing to this, that they've agreed to that tentative contract. Yes, it is, the Council has the ability not to accept something because, like I said, it's a negotiating process, and it's a give and take, and there might be something in there the Council wishes not to have in there. But it is an important point.
Thank you. I just want to close by pointing out my--
Through the Mayor to Troy, I think that's a very relevant point. I've been through, what, two or three of these now, and it's always been like a bilateral agreement, right? So, there's been no argument in this contract. There really hasn't. And I think it's important we keep that relationship with the Union, you know what I mean?
Thank you, Mr. Barney.
Councilman Rousa, I just want to close by pointing out my own fault here. I really just personally see this as one thing that we can do to make sure that, just this week, I heard another joke where the City of Wasilla Police Department was the punchline. And I'm not saying it's an accurate joke and that these comments aren't accurate, but I want the greater community of Alaska to know that we do have the finest police department in all of the State of Alaska, and I just see this as part of it. I've heard people point to pay over and over and over again, and so I just see this as part of it. It's only a small piece, but, you know, I don't know if the rest comes through campaigning to the public or what it is, but I'm not, really not kidding. There's a very poor perception of our police department, and it's not my view, it's what I hear. It's, and I, I'm not making it up. It's just, it's the public perception. So, that's what I'm responding to. Thank you.
Mayor?
I totally disagree with that. Totally disagree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Barney.
Mayor, I do think it would be useful to note, you know, as, so Birch Horton, we represent a lot of police departments across the state in varying ways, and we see what that looks like and what cases look like, what excessive force cases look like, where they're coming from. And I do think this community, at least to the extent, you know, as far as I know, looking both historically and now, the Wasilla Police Department has very few blemishes on its records in any way, and there are no cases that I am aware of where your officers have been tried for excessive force for, and have been, you know, tried and convicted for discriminatory acts. These are very important parts. So I do think, if you're worried about that, one of the things we could do is prepare a report for Council that demonstrates what is happening in Wasilla P.D., what has happened in the past, and what that record looks like, and how your officers are performing, because I think that you would be pleased with what you see. Chief, I don't know if you have anything to share on that, but I thought it would be worthwhile.
Thank you, Holly. I can tell you, just so the Council is aware, that WPD pulled out of one Union and established their own. So, I think for the Council's benefit, that needs to be taken into consideration. And the reason they pulled out was because, it wasn't because of wages or benefits or anything like that, it was because the Union was charging them too much to represent them, just getting nothing out of it. Troy, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
To the Mayor to Council, there's probably multiple reasons why that happened, and only the bargaining members themselves can really answer that question. You know, were they displeased with the prior representation? Probably, but, you know, their establishment of their own employee association was voted on amongst their own members and for obvious, for their own member reasons.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Madam Mayor, call for the question.
Okay.
I disagree.
Okay, we're going to vote on call for the question.
I have not had a chance to comment.
Sorry.
I've been waiting. Madam Mayor, may I comment?
Is there objection from the body, or is your motion, I didn't hear a second?
I withdraw it.
You withdraw it. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Pardon my poor attempt at levity, but I too like the number two. Number two is a very good number. Nice and round. My problem is with number two is that inflation over the last three years, the average roughly of two, which this whole proposal is based on, is very conservative, considering that the inflation, I believe, over the last year is actually extending over 2%. And what I would like to ensure is that the number two is the best possible rate that we can give our employees as a whole across the city, due to the fact that 2020 was such an unusual year, and inflation right now is running a little higher than that, I believe. Troy, would you comment, please?
To the Mayor to Councilman Johnson, so, it's not really based on the inflation rate, it's based on the Consumer Price Index out of this, out of Anchorage. And for the non-bargaining members, or the non-represented, I should say, it's a three-year average of the Anchorage CPI, and it's been running less than two. And this year's no exception, less than two. The collective bargaining agreements themselves call for the 2% as a minimum floor. That's where that 2% comes from. If the city wanted to, they would say that because the non-represented is under City Code, that rate would be less than two. It doesn't make fiscal sense to divide the employees of the city when you've got three collective bargaining agreements all calling for 2%, and then taking out a small fraction of them and giving them less.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying less, sir.
That's not what you're saying, but that's the rationale of why the non-represented got to.
Right.
Because if I ended up doing the three-year average CPI, it would be less than two. So, it's coincidental that because the CPI average is less than two, and the collective bargaining agreements call for a minimum of two, that's why you're seeing 2% across the board on all four groups of employees.
I'm just worried that 2% isn't really reflected of the cost of living increase in 2020.
It may or may not be, but the fact remains, the CPI and the rate is what those collective bargaining agreements call for.
Okay, any further discussion?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, but it takes Council to change that, right?
It would take Council not only to change code, but we'd have to open up all three contracts as well.
All right, right.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Thank you. Then this is on the adoption of Resolution Serial Number 2110. Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa?
No.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2110 passes with Councilmembers Bernie, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Rousa opposed.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you would read Resolution Serial Number 21-13?
Thank you. That's authorizing the Mayor to execute a land use agreement with Wasilla Youth Soccer Association, expanding the use of Bumpus Ballfields for soccer programs.
Is there a motion?
Councilman Brown, I move we adopt Resolution 2113.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember Bernie to approve the Resolution Serial Number 2113. Is there any discussion? Mr. Rousa?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Rousa, so, Section 5 of this, what are we calling it? I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong page. It's not a lease, but, at least, yeah, some kind of land use agreement. It doesn't mention whose responsibility, the parking lot maintenance, other than for trash pickup, so my question is, how about grading, leveling, weed control, et cetera, of the drivable surfaces? It's silent on that, from what I could tell. So that's my first question.
Mr. Giddings?
That's something the city does, probably, once a year, we'll go in there and do grading on those parking lots. In fact, part of this upgrade we have coming for the trailhead is going to bring in some gravel for the soccer field side.
Thank you. I would like to see some clarification in the document drafted, the agreement with WISA, that spells that out, that actually mentions it. And the proposed developments are significant to the property, and there's some information in the resolution about how much it's going to cost, and they're going to, you know, invest a serious amount of money. And my comment on that is that the developments that happen absolutely have to be consistent with the city's current land development code, and it really should be, subject to planning approval, in the same way that any private development is. And that's good. And I didn't know that because it wasn't, it wasn't obvious in the document. But, you know, there's pretty strict standards that people have to meet, and that includes the drivable surfaces, it includes visibility from adjacent roadways, things like that. You know, there's landscape requirements, you know, you need to have a design, you need to have all these things figured out, and it's a very detailed surgical process. And I didn't really see anything in the, in this resolution that spoke to that, and so I just wanted to see how that's handled, whose responsibility are those things, especially, I did see the boundary didn't include the current parking lot. And so my concern is that if WISA's not responsible to develop that part of the land, and it's the city, is the city going to step up to the plate and do what we would require of any private development and upgrade that parking lot and invest in the same way that we would require any private member of the City of Wasilla to do? So that is a question kind of convoluted, but there's a question in there. Hope you can find it. Thank you.
Yeah, the parking lot's actually joint use. It's not exclusive for the soccer folks. We are going to upgrade that as part of this Bumpus Ballfields grant. We're going to put some fencing in. One of the complaints is, because it's gated, and the soccer fields have the key to the gate, obviously, we do, we have to get in there for the water utility, but we're going to make it more of a common area for people to use, the south side, and then they have to go through a fence to get into the other areas. So that's why it's not shown on the diagram as exclusively the soccer folks.
Thank you. And is there engineering, is there landscape design involved in the reconstruction of the parking lot, as we would require of any member of, any private member of the city?
I think parks are exempt from landscaping, and we retain large vegetated areas to make up for it, but it isn't part of the same landscape requirement.
Okay, and one more question. In the lease agreement, is the lease agreement subject to WISA being a nonprofit? That's just a yes or no?
Yes.
So--
I mean, that's what they are, so.
Sure. So, my question is, and I'm a youth soccer coach, and actually coached in Palmer, sorry, I'm an imposter, but, so, one of the issues that you run into in facilities like this when you lease this field to a nonprofit is that they can sublet it to for-profit entities on a smaller scale, all the while the city is leasing this to them, you know, at a very low cost. And I'm just curious how that's handled in this agreement. I don't see that it's mentioned anywhere in there about the for-profit, nonprofit differences and the limits of the use of the facility for those reasons.
Ms. Wales?
Yeah, I think I can, okay, I think I can address some of the issues. I think one of the confusing things you see is, this is a use agreement for seasonal work of property, so it's not a lease, and therefore, they can cancel, and the city can cancel in 30 days. This is just use. And what that, what that does is it prohibits any assignment, so there is a provision in here, making it very clear that they cannot assign, and that they cannot encumber the property, and they are required to maintain parking, and that they have to pick up the garbage, they have to take steps, not only regarding the fields, but also regarding the parking lot. So, a lot of the concerns that Councilmember Rousa's raising are really good ones, but generally live in our, when we're talking about leased property, this is just a use agreement. It doesn't rise to that level of a disposal of city interest. But you can rest assured that when you go to, it's section, let me just find it so you can, it's Section 12, that's the Assignment Prohibited and Encumbrances Prohibited Section. The city's done a good job of really limiting the use of the field, so we know what's going to happen on that field, and it's-- to happen on that field, and it's, it's exactly what you would expect, soccer.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. This is on the, on the adoption of resolution serial number 2113. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
The motion to approve resolution serial number 2113 passes unanimously with councilmembers Rousa, Bernie, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Madam Clerk, please read the title of the items under communications.
Thank you. We have one IM and two sets of commission meetings. The first is IM number 2107, monthly financial reports for the period ending April 30th, 2021, to include the month-to-date expenditure report and disbursements greater than $10,000. We have airport advisory commission meeting minutes from April 22nd, 2021, and planning commission meeting minutes from April 27th, 2021.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And we are on to audience comments. Is there anyone present who would like to address the city council at this time? Seeing no one, next on the agenda is comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, my mic wasn't on. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, with continuing education, we weren't, obviously, nor, this year, due to the pandemic, able to attend our normal in-person conferences that the council funds, but we are very pleased, my office staff, Benji, Sarah, and I, to be able to take a professional development series through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. That'll be done virtually in June, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you, always counsel for funding continuing education. And then for our new members, my annual performance review with the city council will be held at the next city council meeting, June 14th. I will request that in executive session, and so if you have any questions on that process, please feel free to reach out to me before the meeting, and we'll see you here next regular meeting, June 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Attorney? Councilmember Johnson?
No comment.
Councilmember Vlach?
I would just like to say, we're talking about the Wasilla PD, I personally have never heard a joke, or anybody has said negative things about Wasilla PD to me. You know, I may run in different circles, but I just wanted to let the chief know that. I haven't heard, I, I don't hear that when I'm out and about. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
No comments.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yeah, I'd like to just comment with Ms. Vlach. I think we have the best police force in the state, so, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and happy birthday.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city involved in Memorial Day and Fourth of July, and how so?
Okay, and I will cover all of that in my comments, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Rousa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to comment and say that the, the things that I, I say and ask and inquire about here on council certainly don't always reflect my own personal perspective, and I personally have a lot of respect for Wasilla Police Department, and I'm sure when I, one of those words come out of my mouth, there are council members and probably the majority of the folks in this room that just simply don't believe me, and that's fine. I'm, I'm, my questions are in response to the things that, that I see, that I see, and, you know, maybe I do run in different circles, I suppose, maybe that's a, that's a result of, you know, that, that's where it's coming from, I don't know. But, in terms of planning, in, in the quality of our roads, our, our police department, I, I certainly, we'll see the responses, we'll see the results of our, of our decisions as the years move on, and, you know, I, I'd love to be wrong, and I'm sure I am in some ways, but I think that the main point of what I'm trying to do here is just seek to do better wherever we can, whenever we can, feverishly look for opportunities to do better, so that we can keep up with the feverish growth that's happening in the city, because it's not looking to stop anytime soon, so, and that, that's a good thing, you know? It's all good. So, anyway, I'm not here to make friends, and I apologize for that, I'd love to make friends, maybe in a different life we could have, but thank you for your time today.
Okay, Memorial Day, May 31st, we will, the city will be closed, but the annual walk to the cemetery will begin at the Veterans' Honor Wall, and it, they start lining up 10:20, and the walk will start at 10:40. Everybody's invited to come to the ceremony at the graveyard if they so wish, and continuing the, the memorial, it will be at the wall at 1:00 PM. So, that's that. And July the 4th, we're having a parade. Yee-hay! Everybody needs a float in that parade. Everybody, council members, everybody needs to volunteer, so come on out. We are having a Fourth of July parade, a community picnic, a hot dog eating contest, the Carhart Brothers will be there to provide music, we're going to party the rest of the day. So, and we'll have Coke to drink. So, anyway, thank you all at the clerk's office for the beautiful flowers. I so appreciate it. I have been very blessed today by all of my coworkers and everybody, and I can't tell you how much it is appreciated, and thank you so much.
Fourth of July Parade Chairman?
Yes?
Who is it?
Crystal?
Okay.
Are you going to be in it? No, no, don't debate, say yes. Yeah, that's, that's good. Mr. Sterns, is was he going to be in it? Okay, we're good. Stu, are you volunteering? That's right. Good answer. And everybody?
Are we having, is the city having a float?
Yes!
Oh, okay.
Yes! We are! Nikki, if you will come by the HR office, because every department has a, a disc, lacking of a better term, that they will decorate and whatever, and I know none of these old boys wants to decorate that disc or whatever for city council, so I'm letting you off the hook. Anyway...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. You know, I'm still just 29 and holding, right?
I know you are.
I know. All right. With that, we are adjourned at 7:39.